Two, one. Good evening, the time is six thirty. I am Vice Chairwoman Candace Graves. I call this Select Board Special Meeting to order on this date, the seventeenth day of July twenty 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 five. I'd like to remind everyone, today's meeting is being broadcast on TCTV Cable Channel Eight and our YouTube web platform. For those who wish to revisit any part of the procedures, the recording will also be available on the YouTube channel. You can also subscribe to get all your town videos and information on TCTV. We have no public comments for tonight, just a reminder, comments are requested in person. If they are allowed by the Chair, they must be by name and addressed. And you give your address, and if any audience members are recording the meeting or plan to do so, notify us prior to starting. Further, I'd like to ask our partners at TCTV to please inform the Chair if any issues with the live feed occur so that we can pause while you fix any issues. With that said, I would like to go into the pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we have.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to take a moment just to enter some information I found out very late this afternoon, although not a member of the community directly. Robert Richard passed on July fifteenth, many know the name, he served for over thirty years teaching at the middle school at Narragansett. He's actually a member of the town of Westminster. He is greatly missed, it is a deep loss to our entire community. My heartfelt prayers and condolences to the family, all that knew him, and especially the lives of the many students he touched over the thirty year plus time with the school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
So in the room tonight, we have a forum, we have Clerk, Selectman, Tim Toth, Robert May, Select Board Member, and Lisa Bezo. See, I was gonna do it, I do it. Okay, so first item on our agenda is a reappointment to Parks and Recreation Commission. Derek Sutton would like to be reappointed, this will be, I believe, going on his fourth year.
Make a motion to reappoint Derek Sutton to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
I'll second it. Lisa, how do you vote?
I will abstain, that's my bottom line.
Thank you. And Robert, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, and Tim?
I'm gonna vote no, I believe we voted him back onto the commission on February twelfth, looking through the meeting minutes. We removed the female members' name, we voted on three male members, I could not find the list of names.
I'm gonna vote yes, Parks and Rec is a one-year term. And they're done at the end of the thirtieth, and then they get reappointed for the new year, and they only serve for one year. Derek was on and has been on for almost four years, and he wasn't one of those ones in February to be on it, they only have currently on, they only have currently three that have been sworn in, they have one they're waiting on, they will be barely have a form. And the other member, Jessica, she's not coming back, and obviously I vote on this board, so. So, where's the motion fail?
That's two in favor, one against, one abstain.
So what's the math on that? Anybody, anybody help me with this one? No.
What's, I, I.
Does it pass?
Not that I believe, because it's two to one with an abstain.
So it fails, so.
That would be my take, I'm no expert.
So, we're not gonna let, so. Wow. So. It's two, it's two, well, you abstain, so you don't count, so it's me and him, so it's two, so it's two to one.
Two to one, I guess.
So that would be, does that pass or not? Do you think it passes? Well, I guess I'll check on it later to see, I'm gonna put the two to one vote. I'll go check on it later, because I don't have anything to check on it right now. And I know I was giving the math on this earlier, but I don't remember, and I'm kinda like panicking, okay. So the next thing is our discussion on the screening of the TA, having a screening committee for the TA. I put in your packet, some, I went to every website, everything I could find on different towns, how they did their screenings. So I put some ideas down, basically, we have to form, what do we have to form the screening committee? And then we'll have to ask, once we set the guidelines for the vote, if we were to vote to form the committee, people appointed to the committee. So, some of the things I have is the responsibilities of the Town Administrator Screening Committee would include reviewing and evaluating candidates' applicant, applications to ensure that they meet the qualifications and requirements for the position. Conducting first, the next one would be conducting first round interviews with the candidates to assess theirs, to see if they're suitable for the role. And then another one is providing quality finalists to the Select Board for additional interviews. Some of them do like nine boards, I just wrote some of these criterias that I found that they had. Like Ashburnham like had nine, and there was a couple that were far out from where we are, different communities, some had five. So I just went with five, since we're a smaller community. I just, I wrote one member Advisory Committee, one member Public Safety, so that could be someone from Fire or Police. One member of another town department, so one of our other departments, like a department head or something, and then one member other town Board Committee, so another committee or Commission or Committee Member that would like to, and then one member citi- citizen at large. And then I have written down here, the Select Board, to like to do a posting to say maybe the Select Board is seeking volunteer applications to appoint individuals to take part in the Town Administrator Screening Committee. These are just kind of the things I found, does anybody have any other info or anything that they would like to share, how they see it to go?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The, let's say, question concern that I would have with the breakdown, and I have no problem with the reviewing and evaluating, the conducting first rounds and and providing qualified finalists. I'm just concerned with public safety, that they're going to be able to attend simply because of the schedules that particularly the Police Department works. So I don't know if we just wanna, you know, basically, you know, like, kinda remove the, the public safety heading and put, you know, department heads from two departments, or change it to, you know, two advisory members or two board members, or two citizens at large, you know, add that, I don't know, but.
Some did, some, oh, excuse me, some did have board, Select Board Members, but I didn't know since we're already gonna do the interviewing, you know, let somebody else do the front line, need to bring them into us.
I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to having at least one Select Board Member in the screening process.
What do you think, Tim, do you think a Select Board Member should be one of the members?
The way this is written, I do not, because we're gonna be making additional interviews to qualified finalists, that's just my two cents on the thought. I would also add, I like what's here, it gives us something to look at and think about.
Right, that's what I would go.
I would suggest we defer this to our next meeting as an old business item, so we have the Chairman here as well to vote on this and take action. I don't wanna exclude our Chair. You did a great job with it.
Okay, I just didn't know, like, I mean, we could vote just to open up the screening committee, and then we could go back and rate the criteria, but that's fine, too. I just, I tried to get the info from Jeff.
For sure. Yes, Madam Chair, I, just, you know, I do believe we have the time to delay it, you know, for the next meeting when the.
Yeah, I did, I did ask to put everything that you, three of the things back on our agenda. I did that late this afternoon, and asked them to please these three, this item and two other items, just in case, because Jeff wasn't here, so for that purposes. But I just didn't know, you know, because this is just putting the board together, but I had asked him what members that he would want, if he had anybody an idea, so, because that's the whole thing, I mean, are we gonna like, how is that, like, we gonna just do, like I said, like an ad, like, like a post it on, you know, whatever town bulletin board, the website, the Facebook, and say, hey, who wants to be on it, and these are the criterias? Or are we gonna go sign out to try to find, you know, who wants, I call up, you know, the Chair of Advisory and say, hey, who do you guys want to appoint to be on this committee, that kind of thing? And then we have to wait for their board member meetings? Or we, or we just wanna put up like a, an ad out where this is the criteria, if you're on any of this, please come and see us, that we don't have to wait for those boards, too? So I don't really know.
It's an interesting point. We do have a process where people can go onto the town's website and fill out a community interest form, and get those back to us.
That's what, I think.
This is one time I would say those forms need to come straight to the Board.
I would concur with that.
Another thing I found with their, with, it's a lot of their committees, when they did these committees, when they went into, they did their meetings, all their meetings were done in executive sessions. So you can't read any of their men, like, because they were doing interviews. So they did all these pre-screening interviews in executive sessions, and for most of these, most of these towns. It was kinda interesting.
Are you saying for the committee?
Yeah, the committee itself, that they, their agenda, there wasn't, like, I tried to find like what their agendas were gonna be, like, if there's any questions or anything. And a lot of these pre-screening ones, they, they, they get a committee, but then when they do their agenda, it's always, it's an executive and whatever the number was, or that, for that line, or their purpose. I mean, they, it's all like that, all of it, so there wasn't, one of them, I think Ashburnham is the one that, was the two thousand, one of them did two thousand and nineteen a couple of times. Must have hired someone, but there's no minutes or anything, and then now they're doing, they're doing, they would do, I don't know if they finished, but they were doing it again.
Yeah, and they did the final interviews at the Select Board Live.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, yeah, so everybody could see the final point of this.
Yeah, oh, always a slippery slope. The committee itself is ad hoc, when you start talking HR type positions is where you get into the danger of having things done openly, or under the, under the provisions of the potential executive session.
That's probably why they did it.
That protects both the committee members and the applicants themselves.
Yeah, but these, like I said, this was, this was the bulk of what I could find, and I went far, I went to towns, I don't even, towns I never heard, cities, I never even heard of, I was like, okay, Massachusetts, I'll check you out, to see what you were doing, so, this is what I found. So, do we have to make any kind of motion if you guys wanna table it, or we just do it in action and just say we're gonna table it? If that's what you wanna do.
Is that a motion?
Yeah. Motion to table this for the next meeting.
I will second.
How do you vote, Lisa?
Yes.
How do you vote? How do I, yeah, okay, how do you vote, Tim? And I vote yes, and that passed at six forty-three. Okay, so our next one is discussion, possible action number five, and that is the Town Administrator Job Posting. We had already kinda posted, like voted on that the last meeting, but during that time, we, we went with what Jeff had, but we had asked Holly if she minded, like, and just cleaned it up a little bit, and said, get it ready for, for, this is how I remember it, to vote for it. We did vote for it, and it was like, so I just asked her if they had anything, and this, they sent me this, and of course, I sent it all out, because they sent it to me, that's work that they did, so I wanted everybody to see it. And then, and then I went into Jeff's stuff, and then did, you know, what it was, it's all there, the only difference was the the compensation, it wasn't in the, in Jeff's, and then the, I think, it was the way he wrote how to look for it, under our town. So when you go to the, the full job description is located under our town, which is, that's a menu choice, job opportunities, and then it's at, you know, when you, when you go to that website, that's where you find it. So that's why that was written that way, but this is exactly the way, I mean, I wrote it the way Jeff had it. I think I've inverted the first two lines just to make it look more inviting, my thinking was that the job ad is about telling them, what, we're looking for you, and this is who we are, do you wanna be a part of us? You know, whereas the, the job description is about, this is what you're looking for. And that's, I think that's what Jeff was trying to do, why we, you can click and see your job, but he wanted the ad to be shorter, and that's what we had, we had voted for the other night, so. And this is what I did, based on it, and I don't know if there's any more changes or anything. And then, Tim brought to attention that our ad should have, be more ADA compliant. So I did some research, apparently, you know, different fonts, and black and white was okay, it was okay, some of them you could do it, so I didn't wanna do too much to it. Some say that colorblind or whatever, you could do like a gray color, so I just went with what I could to, to try my best, and then of course, it's twelve and up size, and, and spacing, so I tried. I didn't, I don't really know much about it, so, I mean, I have my own thing, so.
The piece, the piece that always strikes me on ADA is they need to be devoid of color.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I can't help, I mean, the sale's a sale, but, I mean, I didn't have a black and white, but I, I did it, like, it's open, like, for me, I color thing. I need to have color so I can follow the way I do it, so that's why everybody's different, so.
Yeah.
And I said, okay, so I took that, and then this was everything, like I said, Jeff's stuff, if you go back for what we voted on that night, and it was just, you know, that we didn't have anything on the stat, you know, talking about, because that would be someone, someone would wanna know, what is Sally, how is that gonna happen? So that was the, I think that was pretty much it, so. And I think it's, I mean, that, and we already did the job description, so I didn't know if you wanted to vote for the, another time on the final product, or have any more tweaks you want to it, and then we can just send it, so hopefully Monday it can be posted on the town website, and all the good places it needs to go. Any thoughts, anybody?
I like it, brief, succinct.
I like it.
And the town website, I would say the MMA Beacon, Mass Hire, and we discussed the number of potential bulletin board job posting type services as well.
I personally like this format, I had suggested to Jeff at one point to keep it short and sweet, and tie it to the job description.
Yeah.
Because I saw so many that were huge.
Yeah.
And I was getting down to him, and I'm like, no, they need to be more concise.
Yeah.
You know, to get you there, this is just too detailed.
It is an ad, so you're, you're trying to, and you put too much in it, you know, it's just, but we're the town of Templeton, and we're seeking the Town Administrator, and we're made up of four villages, and this is where we're located, if you don't, if you've never heard of us, and this is what we have.
Jeff's mind, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean Jeff had it spot on. So, I mean, and then, like I said, it looks bigger than what Jeff is not just, I mean, that's just a little section I added, but because of the spacing and the sizing, you have no choice on that.
Wait, so.
Yeah, so you have to, so. Do we need to revote on it, or are we, are we good to just have her post it the way it is? Because we had already voted on it, but this is just a little bit different, so, I don't know if you wanted to do her, anybody wanna make a motion to revote on it?
I actually like this, like the way this is, I think you did a really good job with it. Thanks, it's a lot easier to, it's.
It is a whole bunch easier to read, and I know we're in a news desert, if we're gonna use any newspaper for advertising, shorter is better, because we're gonna pay by the half inch or inch in a column size, and this is easily adjustable.
Nice. Does anybody wanna make a motion to have her post it?
So moved. Second in.
How do you vote, Lisa?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and it passed at six forty-nine PM.
And?
Candace?
Yeah.
Bob, please.
Oh, Bob, sorry. Some people, some people call me Candace, some people call me Andy, so.
I keep on looking over my mother over there.
All right, so number six, our discussion is possible action, is a review of our personnel policy and possible suspension of sections. So, on this one, I looked through a lot of stuff, like many of you did, and there was a couple of things, but then I would be like, oh, the clothing thing, it was more geared to like the office or something. So I was like, oh, and then the next line, it would show you how the Department Head had the discretion that it's their uniform, like, oh, okay, that's covered. Because I was like, this is more like, it said no hoodies, I mean, no sweatshirts, I was like, yeah, well, the guy laborers do. So, but, anyway, so, during the process of me looking through the stuff and whatever, I just wanted to bring it to your full attention, because it was pointed out to me that in our Select Board Policy, which we'll be talking to do next, apparently there is a section in it, and it talks about where you have to post something on the agenda, and then you can go back another meeting, and then you vote on it. Now, that particular section talks about doing a, I took it as doing a whole policy, but yet there was no provision as an amendment. Like, usually sometimes you have a section of what you do in the event of amendment, if you wanna just amend your policy, it didn't have it, so. So it can be, so I made sure that this was one of the items that would be on the twenty-third, so we could discuss it, get it all ready, maybe not vote on it tonight, so that in case that that was the case, then we would be in compliance to that. So I didn't want any issues, because I remember this being on our, our agenda, like, you know, this cycle, you know, so I wanted to make sure, because of that line, but it, it's, it's in the policy, and it talks about, you know, making policy, making, making a policy, and it doesn't say anything about amendments, it just talks about the line that you can put it, you have to put it on an agenda, and then you have to put it on the other, another agenda to vote on it, is how it's listed, it's some, I don't know page it's on.
It's not supposed to be voted on the first time up.
First time up, yeah, to give, get people a chance to, but, so I just, it was, it was brought to my attention as I was, you know, reading through everything, and then I was like, well, I just wanna make sure. So I, that's why, yes, today I went and I said, and then Jeff not being here, I wanted to make sure, because this is a, these are policy things, and he's a Select Board Member that's not here, so he might wanna add it, too, so we can debate it, talk about it, come up with a section if we want, I mean, it's up to you guys if you wanna vote on tonight, how you feel on it, but I just wanted to point that out to be, you know, you know, yeah, that board.
One of the beauties with the fact it's our policy, rewrite policy.
Right, and then again.
This is not like we're trying to amend a bylaw.
Right.
It has to be presented, discussed, reviewed, presented a second point, voted on, and then actually has to go to the town meeting floor, because ultimately it's the voters who make the final decision.
And the way that I, like, I, I wasn't the person who voted for our, the Select Board Policy, and where it listed it, and I didn't take it, I took it, is that if I was doing a whole, like a whole bloated, this is a new policy, I didn't see anything that talked about an amendment on what, 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 what the policy was on an amendment. And so, it's, it's our policy, and it is, you know, it's not like, you know, some things didn't hap, some things don't happen sometimes, that's the reason why that's on here, too, to fix the problems in our policy. So, I said, I just.
We look on page thirteen, this was actually signed by the Chair on one thirteen, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, yeah.
It is a common and sound practice, policies should be reviewed and validated annually. That's one thing that the Board has been remiss on.
But I, just like I said, we have this policy for our neck, or another gender item tonight, but it comes into fact with this one. So, that's why I just wanted to point it out, to let everybody know about it. On, because we're on the personnel policy, and so, having that provision in ours, since we're reviewing it, we just wanted to know if we wanted to make any changes on the, on the person, personnel policy tonight, if we wanted to table it, but I made sure that we had, we could do either or. But anybody comfortable with, yes?
I see your book, please.
Check this page out, see my.
Okay, that, that's probably all I need, then.
Okay, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Candace.
No, I did, if you wanted to take a look in. Well, I said, I, I thought maybe if we could vote tonight, if we wanted to. Yeah, but it's, yeah, but it's, it's just talking about establish the, of a policy, policy shall be adopted by point, yeah, but it's about a whole thing, it's not, you know, changing or, or amending a section or anything. So right now, we're talking about reviewing the personnel policy and possible any suspension or of sections or anything, anybody wants to change or do in the personnel policy? If anybody went through it and seen anything they wanted to do? I mean, there's a, I mean, there's a few things here and there, you got that forty-hour thing, where it's talking about forty hours, and there, and our full times are working thirty-eight point four, there's some of that in literature in there going on. And there's just some things.
I'm so not used to looking at this on paper form.
It's different, right? It's different.
It's completely different. Yeah, because I'm looking for section eight.
Oh, well, I have that on the, on the thing that was out. Eight, yeah, eight, that, that was, so it was, it goes back from there. I think section eight starts around twenty-seven, page twenty-seven or twenty-eight. And that's part of it, that's out.
Yeah, I don't think it's section eight. I believe it was eight.
I believe it was eight. She just goes, that's the only thing that's eight, eight K in this, so that's, it's not a.
I think it's just, I think it's just, um. That's just page twenty, twen- twenty A E. Page twenty-eight E, section E, I think that's what the one it is. Section eight.
Okay, yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I had it out.
Yeah, alright, sorry.
That's okay.
Like I said, not used to looking at it on paper. I would make motion to suspend. S- section eight E. And to continue the review on the balance at a later date.
Hey, now, how do you vote Lisa? How do you vote Tim? I mean, um, Bob?
Yes.
How do you vote Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes, and that passed at six fifty-nine.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sorry for the confusion, folks.
Okay, the next one is the, is, um, is they, we could, we're talking about the review of the select board. Operating policy and uh, possible amendments to it. I made a bunch of stuff and then I sent you all mine cleaned up, but I also sent you all my notes that I had did, like a note page. And you see where I came from, all that stuff, where I got it all. My thinking was based on things that our board had talked about and things that I had seen, different sections of them. And just like on the first page alone, I would just like, when I read it, I was like, come on. I was like, no, just that alone, I'm not, but there was after, um. Talking to somebody else, talking about, um, page six, you have a change in it on page six, I changed that last night. So if you go to page six and you do our minutes, um, of the meeting, uh, minutes of the meeting. Um, that was brought up, that many thought that that would be a thing. And, um, it, it has a provision for unforeseen circumstances or complication or an illness. But it does say. Bad in it, so. Like I said, most of the stuff, um, but for me, our, um, the select board policy was really surprising to me, reading through it. Um, because I had done some policies, went to various boards and things I was on. And I noticed that there was no real provision with if everybody in our office is like sick or something and gone for a while period. That what would happen, like, and, and usually, it's not that you wanna go in and do anything. But it's usually something, usually you see like the town administrator. And or the chair or and or does any of your board, cause that covers it so that you could go and do the work and the job. But I mean, the select board policy was kind of like, it was kind of like you're not supposed to do anything. And I understand, like, oh, you're the governing policy board and stuff. But yeah, our responsibility is to, um, the residents to make sure that, and, and to our employees that the day to day happens. And if something happened, God forbid to anybody, um, there was no real provisions on that. So a lot of my changes, there weren't a lot of them. And a lot of them were just based on that criteria. Um, and then there was just some, um, like I said, like on the first page, on who, who, who runs, who, who, who is, who is it? And I'm like, well, that original one, adding that third, there is no three, there is no vote on that, that's a, that's a job hire. So I didn't know, I don't know how, what the thinking of like, I, like some point, I felt like maybe, um. I, I mean, I probably not true, but I felt like the staff wrote it, like there were parts where I just felt like it wasn't written, like. Maybe not written by a select, uh, I mean, I won't offend anybody, but I just, my personal experience with some policies like this kind of style, I was kind of shocked. But so all my changes that I made, that I suggested, um, my, my amendments were all based on. Making sure that, um, that our office is protected, has coverage. Um, and making sure that, um, that we don't give away all of our, our rights as, as, as people in this town have voted us to have. Um, but yet still making sure that, you know, not everybody wants to do everything either. But hiring people to do the things that we want them to do for us was my thinking. Do you have any thoughts on this, Lisa? Still reading. Okay. That's okay, but yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Again, a slippery slope. It is a common premise of management. When the employees are not available to do the job, management steps in and shoulders the responsibility. I don't really feel it needs to be spelled out here, cause that's basic management one O one. We recently had both members in our office not available. It was brought to my attention by a couple of folks around the community. One of them even shared a photograph of the note on the board, due to unforeseen circumstances, offices closed. Signed Select Board. I don't know about the rest of you, I don't recall a conversation or coordination, I did not approve that note to be put up. That is a problem.
I do have, um, some personal experience of this week, policy wise. And I can just say that this policy, um, I've never seen anything, I've never seen anything like this. But this policy was being used as, um, uh, like, I don't, how do I, I don't really wanna say something. I don't wanna say this, but it was used like, your employees using it against you. You know, like, what? It's like, I mean, I know, I know, I've seen selectmen you do it too, like, I've seen, like. I was like, I'm like, this is just to be efficient, I thought, I, you know, and everybody should be following the best of the, the ability. It's not, like I said, it's not a bylaws, not a state law, it's something that our board says that we wanna try to live by. And we vote for it and say, this is what we wanna do and how we wanna run our business, you know, basically our business. Um, our day-to-day business, um.
So I'd like to, um, must, well, respectfully to disagree with that, with, um, with policies, even though it's basic management. Feel like it needs to be spelled out. So I think, things that, um, if it's not written, you can't really enforce it.
No, that's what I found when I was a manager. If it's written, you have.
Written, there's no if's and if's about, so how it's gonna go.
Yeah, that's what was happening, that's what hap- like they, somebody's pointing it to me and. You know, it's, um. Right, yeah, and that's the same thing with the job description, well, the job descriptions always say a disclaimer that it can subject to change and all that. But don't, a policy like this doesn't have that, that living ability to do that, so you have to amend it, you have to change it. Um, like I said, there's a lot of good spirit, like a lot of stuff, like how it lays out or how, how. Yeah, how it lays out stuff, but then there's no provision for like, um. So like, like what agendas and stuff like that, making sure that they're done correctly, and then, um. Any chair, I mean, on every board I've ever been in, that Roberts rules, that is your agenda, that is the chair's agenda. And, um, and it can't, like, it can't be the way it's been, you know, it just can't be that way. So, you know, just making things in here, little things here and there, just saying, you know, who can do what, but there wasn't some big, it wasn't some big crazy stuff. A lot of stuff, I mean, they did a lot of good work too, so a lot of good work in here too, that works really well. But like I said, I was just like that first page where, you know, I was like, really? The next is three, I'm like, no, this two. You know, that was just, that's where it all starts, right there, I think it works right, it works right in that's, that pocket. You go right into that and there's the empowerment, um, and that's like some of the stuff, um. When I was a chair or department head for this town, um, some, like I said, the chief, things like that were used. You know, because I was on a board that is its own entity, right, has its own bo- has its own bo- votes, has its own stuff. Um, it can't, um, it can't be manipulated, you can't manipulate a vote, so. It's just that, you know, you wanna be careful about that stuff, because we're the same, like our, we, we're the same way, our vote can't be manipulated. We can't be, you know, it have to be careful about that, so in, in, in a policy like that, you wanna make sure that that's not happening. That our vote, you know, that what we do is not, you know, we feel like, that was just my opinion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I understand the spirit and intent of the conversation, I accept the arguments in a friendly manner. This just cements my earlier statement about the requirement to annually review all the policies. And find all these challenges and come up with solutions.
Bob, you have anything?
The, the only thing that I would state right at this moment is that, um, unless. Anyone can point out, uh, the, any urgency into changing this, I would think that this could. Be brought forward more times than one. Um, or, you know, recommendations, you know, and, and to concur with what Candace says or to add more. Um, and I was just thinking that maybe it would be good to have the chairman. Present if we're gonna vote to change the policies that we all work under. Um, but I have no issues with changing this policy, the, the policy. Because I've read through it many times and there are issues that need to be addressed. So.
Like I said, I made all the changes where I thought and. That are, that we were being told that we can't do our job. Um, so I, that's what, that's the things that I changed, like I said, I gave you, I, I sent everybody so everybody could have where my notes were and what it was I changed. You could see where I changed it and the, and then I gave you all a copy of it, all changed, ready to go. Um, like I said, um, I just, yeah, I think Jeff probably wants to say something about it, but. I don't think that if we continue not to make any amendments to this, especially that first page. Where it says, um, you know, the specifics of this policy are based upon Templeton having. And the original says three function areas of his local government, that's not true, there is only two, it's the voters. And the select where they appoint, and then we hire or appoint everybody to do all the jobs. So to say that that's an equal footing is not necessarily the truth. And that's where it all starts, and then it goes downhill from there, when we, for us, as a select board, it goes down there from there. And then anything that I changed, like I said, and my changing was, and my thinking was. There were, there was something in there so that you could, you provisioned that if you had to do, not that you wanna do it. But if you wanted to go in there and answer a phone in our office or do, you know, talk to, or do something, you have, that you have the right to do it. But most likely, most of us, I don't think about any of you, but yeah, we're not gonna do that unless we really, like, there was a real, like. You know, everybody's in the hospital and nobody's gonna be in there, you know, right, it's not like, yeah, but. We wanna be able to, everybody's in the hospital and there's an emergency. We gotta, our office needs to happen so that people, o- other departments and stuff can get a, you know, or the people in the town can call somebody or. You know, be able to go and get the stuff and get it all set up, so it's a, it's, it's a thing that you should have learned, like, you know, in twenty twenty. That you should have those, like, everything has to have a first and a second, a helper, and everybody has to have a provision that things can happen. Because things don't always go as planned in life. And this, this, this policy was not set up this way, this policy was to say that we hire all these people and do things, but we're not allowed to help. And that, cause, because I believe that, because before, board members did a lot of helping.
Well, I was gonna say, in that regard, I can see why, you know, it makes very little sense to have board members jumping in and jumping out. You know, inconsistently, um, because that just makes m- more misses happen.
Right.
Um, but I do get your point, whereas like, so when there was nobody in the office. That it's good that, let's say, one of us to go in there, to be there in case something comes up. So at least we can take it into the office, um, you know, um. But.
And also it's our office and you don't wanna be a guest in your own office.
Good point there too.
Yeah.
Well, I agree, but I do believe that this is a. Reviewing and amending the policy is something that you have your board should be present for, I'd like to go over it and read it more, um.
You said you have the original that's in the, in your book or it's on the town website, you can go.
Right.
Yeah, and then, like I said, you make your own choices on what you wanna change, but. A- and I, I just wanna say, um, and this is what I've seen over the years, and this is not to knock anybody or do anything. And people have pointed out, residents, that our board is known for doing a lot of discussions. And then we never just pull that Band-Aid and do that hard lip. Right, we don't do it, and it's like, yeah, we, you know, maybe my amendment's not that great, but, you know, there's a, like, maybe there's a few more things. But I just feel like it has to be done, this has to be voted on, not tonight, but I'm just saying that changes have to be made. To structure, to, to put it, cause if we're gonna hire a town administrator coming to this thing, all of this needs to be, it needs to be the right way. So it's like, when, it's like you wanna put your best foot forward, you want everything cleaned up, everything ready to go, so when the new person comes in. It's a whole clean slate and a whole new day, and this is, I believe that the select board policy has major issues. And it causes issues and friction, it caused it in the past for the board itself, and it caused it for our office and in other confusions. And I think it's our responsibility to make sure we amend it in a way that it's gonna serve the, us as a select board the correct way. Um, and then especially when we're doing some new hiring and things, that it will make sure that, you know, we start on the right foot. With everything and the right thinking.
Yeah, I don't disagree with the word you say, Candace, about that. Um, my only thought is that I would like a full board.
Yeah, me too.
Vote on it, so.
Why, I just wanted to, for Wednesday night, to make sure we can do it. Um, but I wanted us to have the, the discussion, to look over it, to make our changes, make our choices. And just to say, I really, like, I personally, I'm good to go, like, if you wanna add something else, I, I like, I'm pretty probably, probably gonna be good with it. But I'm good to go to vote on something, possibly. Um, you know, that's why I wanna make sure it's on the next agenda, cause I think if we keep on kicking the can, we're just gonna, like, yeah, I'm not in. For it to be arguing the same argument or having the same issues, and this isn't like personal stuff, like. If you have.
I don't think there's any argument with this.
You have a policy that shuts you out, and you shut up. That's simple.
So should we make motions, I make a motion to table this for the next meeting?
Yep, anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Okay, how do you vote Lisa? How do you vote Bob?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Yes, seventeen. Um, sev- seven? Pass the table. I think I do like, due time. Okay, so the next part is our, let's see. Okay, we did say, um, seven, so we're on number eight, which is our select board office hours. And, um. Apparently the office hours were voted on many years ago, uh, two thousand and sixteen, and there is some stuff on. Mean it, so basically the select board voted the office hours for town hall, they were voted on. And, um, and this is, we're talking about our office hours, the select board office hours, if I get this correct, is what, what, um. How they, that it was supposed to be presented on our door. So does anybody wanna start the conversation or take, take, uh, lead on it or say anything? Feel free.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It, I can completely concur, it was twelve eighteen of twenty sixteen. At the meeting, when it was passed, it was, uh, action item four E, proposed town hall office hours. And that was under former administrator Terranzini. What was agreed upon was Mondays, seven thirty A M. to six thirty P M. Tuesdays through Thursdays, seven thirty A M. to four thirty P M. The Monday date and times were arranged, because at that time, the board used to meet every Monday. And that was after some changes in personnel and a bunch of shortcomings, that was part of what drove this. There was a, a number of town employees here, as called out in the meeting minutes, who absolutely agreed with this. There was even some side discussions about those who took an hour in between sessions to go grab a meal, do whatever, freshen up. But it gate, made them available. But it made them available when the board was meeting, it absolutely made perfect sense. Fast forward to recent, the sign on the door magically appeared, and having sat in this seat for over five years. I was never consulted or conferred on it, so I don't know where the change actually came from, but. It did not occur, to the best of my knowledge, with the approval or the blessings of the board. And if the town is going to claim to be the equal opportunity employer, this is town hall, all offices. Unless we specifically specify, like our veteran services director, who does a lot of outside of normal duty time. Processes and work, everybody should be marching and playing to the same sheet of music.
It was brought to my attention that, um, because, um, um, the select board meeting. They will, the four thirty, because they, they're doing, they were doing seven thirty to four thirty on Monday and through Thursday. Um, because of they have to do the select board meeting, but so doesn't, um, department heads that are in this building, they have to come. Do their fourth quarter report and they have to come to the different meetings, um, but that's a scheduling thing. Um, and the way, you, you have two people in an office or three people in an office, you two, I mean, most, all of our departments usually have a first and a second, you know? And somebody's opening, um, in my investigation, um, in the, in this building. The majority of the department heads come in themselves and open, so the head tier person. And then the assistants, you know, only open, like, they'll open like on, um, uh, when they, when they're on vacation or things like that. But they usually come in later because they're the part-time employee, um, cause most, the way it's set up is most of our department. Um, head tier people are full-time and then the secondary is usually a part-time person. Um, and so, you know, the thinking is that this is just an order, if, if they make it work. They get where they need to be, they'll come to sit in these meetings and they get, they understand how to do, um, their minute, you know. With the hours of the door to, to make sure they can, and so, I was like, oh, they kind of, I mean. If you're someplace and you're dealing with somebody in a department at seven thirty in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning, and there's an issue. And you need to get some information for the select board office, it ain't happening. And I was, that happened to me before I became a selectman, um, because this half, this change started happening around that time. And I didn't realize when I was in that transit, transition, um, and it was really important. And I couldn't talk to anybody, it was kind of, yeah, I couldn't get it, you know, but yeah, everybody should be on the same page.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I concur with the statement that's going on, and I believe our office hours and the select board should be. What they were voted on, um, by the select board, I don't believe they should have changed. Now, on another note, since they were set up at the time, uh, with Monday being seven thirty to. To six thirty, um, due to the select board meeting on Mondays usually at that time. Um, does anybody feel that the town hall hours in general, I know that's not the discussion on the. I think for tonight, but overall, these hours might need, um, adjusting. Just a thought for future reference.
Or, or our meetings could go back to Mondays too, I mean, I don't know, I mean, that, that, I mean. That's also, you know, not on the table tonight, um, but that's, that's a possibility, I, I don't know why, where they, I mean. Maybe it's payroll, maybe it's this or that, you know, there could be reasons, but those are also possibilities, you know?
But for that, I, I would, you know, state that I, I think the office hours should be uniform.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I would be willing to make a motion as such. That we retain or, uh, a motion that we have office hours as voted. On December twelfth, two thousand sixteen. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, December twenty eighth, two thousand sixteen, no, that's when it was approved.
This is the minutes approved.
That's when it was, okay.
It was Monday, December twelfth, yeah, two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah, two thousand and sixteen, um, and that it was approved Monday, seven thirty AM to six thirty PM. And Tuesday through Thursday, seven thirty to four thirty PM.
How do you vote Lisa?
Yes.
How do you vote, Bob?
Yes.
How do you vote, Tim?
Uh, I'm going to vote to the affirmative, I do wanna add one other comment, uh, you've had some interesting commentary. Department heads and even some of our own employees are exempt. The beauty of that is they're salaried, given the druthers, take hourly over salary every time. Because when you're expected to be present, you're expected to be present, but I, I agree with the motion as made and seconded.
Um, I'm gonna vote, yes. So that's gonna pass at seven twenty-four. Okay, so I didn't know if I was supposed to, um, so I just added the board, uh, member comments, that in case anybody had anything. That came up, I mean, it's not, it's, sometimes it's done for special meetings, sometimes not, but I just thought it'd be, okay. So if anybody has anything they'd like to say.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, yeah, something came up this week that, uh, I've been wondering about. And I'd like to, um, let's say, get some resolution on, um. I believe it was at the fall town meeting, um, that the. Citizens were asked to vote on whether to sell three properties. Um, that have been taken in tax takings, um, by the town. Um, and to my understanding, nothing is being done about that. Um, we've got, you know, we went the extra step to get the approval from the town meeting, which is a question whether we needed that or not. Um, but we went to that. Length, and then we've just done nothing. And I think we should, if we're gonna sell those properties, we should get into selling those properties prior to a market collapse. It would probably be ideal, and as far as I know, there's issues and work to be done. With those properties, um, so rather than just let it sit, I think we need to. Get working on it either ourselves or, um, direct somebody to, um. Facilitate the process to get them on the market. Um, and that's basically my comment for this evening, in a nutshell. I just think, you know, um, as you just mentioned a minute ago, things get talked about and then they just get left over here on the side. Well, this is another one, and this is one that involves three properties, three different pieces of land. Um, that we're not collecting taxes on, that would be nice to get on the tax rolls. Um, it's just something that I think we should probably put on a future agenda. To discuss. And that's it, thank you.
I've said enough then.
Okay, um, yeah, so our next meeting is Wednesday night, um, and our agenda's up. Um, there's a few items that are not correct, um. And so, those are, hopefully, we'll be able to be able to address, but, um, Monday. To make the change so that they can make the cut for, for Wednesday, um, so. Just let Jeff know if you have, if you're one of the ones that have any issues. Um, I would recommend putting Holly and Kelsey both on the email chain with Jeff to say that this needs to be added to the agenda. Um, this, um, putting them both on, it seems to, because you don't know who's in the office and who have the ability to do it. Um, so. Uh, yeah, so I think this is a good meeting, I thank everybody for coming out and thanks to C C and me for being here. And, um, with that said, if anybody has any kind of motions they would like to make.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And how do you vote Lisa?
Yes.
How do you vote Bob?
No.
How do you vote Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes.